Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to City Hall for tonight's very special and final council meeting of Alderman Brown and Alderman Flanagan. I proudly call this meeting to order and ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Chuck Brown.
Here.
Mike Bruno.
Here.
Don Cummings.
Here.
Dorothy Flanagan.
Here.
Dean Kilburg.
Here.
Greg Maladra.
Here.
Richard Marx.
Here.
Mary Sino.
Here.
Tom Simonian.
Here.
Ron Singer.
Here. We begin our city council meetings with a pledge of allegiance, and I think it's only fitting that we ask Alderman Brown and Alderman Flanagan to proudly lead us in that pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both. Item 3A this evening is to proclaim May 3rd through the 9th, 2015, as Public Service Week in the City of Geneva.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Bruno, second by Alderman Flanagan, all in favor of so proclaiming, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Well done. And to our Public Works team and all public service officials, thank you very much. Item 3B is to proclaim May 17th through the 23rd, 2015, as Public Works Week in the City of Geneva. Alderman Flanagan makes the motion.
Second.
Alderman Marx makes the second. All in favor of so proclaiming, please say aye.
Aye.
Once again, congratulations, and thank you. Ah, now the good stuff. Item 3C, to recognize Alderman Chuck Brown and Alderman Dorothy Flanagan for their years of service as aldermen in the City of Geneva. Thanks.
I threaten to move the table.
Certainly, I will defer to the council, or perhaps anyone in the audience who would like to say something in celebration and recognition of.
I think Dorothy would like to say something.
And I do have some comments to make as well, so.
I do have.
The floor is yours.
I do have written down something because it's very difficult, and it will be very difficult for me even to read this, let alone try to remember.
I have a dollar bet you'll not make it through.
Dollar bet? Maybe I'll try to do it.
You erase that tape, Pete.
Um, we're, do you want to, should we step to the podium, do you think, or can we do it from here?
Whatever you're most comfortable doing. This is your evening as well, so.
Okay, well, then I'll stay put. Um, I've been anticipating this day for some time with mixed emotions. After 22 years, it may be time, but it's still hard to say goodbye. Today, it's an end of an era for Chuck and me, and a celebration for a new beginning for Jim and Tara. I've been honored to serve over the years with over 30 different dedicated individuals on this council. Four mayors, two city administrators, two police chiefs, two fire chiefs, and numerous department heads. All of you, council and staff, have been an important part of my life. I've given to, I've gotten to know many of you personally, as well as professionally, and you are like family in many ways. I've helped welcome many to our family and sadly bid farewell to those who have gone. I've shared in the joys and sorrows, I've had to agree, to disagree over issues, but I have always tried to respect each and every one of you and your views. And now it's my turn to leave. I want to thank you and the citizens of Geneva for giving me this opportunity to serve. I have tried to do so honorably, to the best of my ability, and I hope I haven't disappointed anyone in any way. I wish all of you the best, particularly my longtime 4th Ward partner and friend Ron Singer, and Chuck Brown, who will be joining me in retirement after 25 years of public service himself, and my successor, Jim Rudecki. It's a new beginning for you, Jim and Tara, and I wish you wisdom and compassion when working for the people of Geneva. God willing, you'll see me around town, the city that I love, maybe even digging in the dirt or on a new adventure. Thank you again, everyone.
Thank you. Mayor Burns and Alderman Burns, we served together as aldermen of the 1st Ward from '97 to 2001. Appreciate those years, we comped just a little.
Thank you.
I couldn't say it as well as Dorothy could, I've never been as eloquent as Dorothy, but I'll say something slightly different. Thanks to the people of the 4th Ward who elected me twice, and the people of the 1st Ward who elected me five times, uh, my house didn't move, the border moved while I was in Washington. Um, when Mary Kay and I moved here in '74, we realized immediately Geneva was a special place, and we went the usual route. Tara reminds me of the same route. We got involved Cub Scouts, teen dancers in St. Peter's basement, high school boosters, and when Jim Riley, in 1986, I went to him in Riley's drugstore worried about the new Williamsburg development, and he said, "Well, you've got to run for my seat, I'm expanding my business." And since my daughter Susan was working at the drugstore too, I had little choice, and I won a close race. And I did manage to get a few things done in the Williamsburg subdivision, changed the roads a little bit, maybe it's a little bit better, it is possible to get something done. Um, this is a city full of volunteers, the council are volunteers, even the mayor, even though it's a tough job running, it's a tough job running for alderman, you in some sense have to volunteer your time, in more than some sense. I have had the privilege of serving with five mayors and over 50 aldermen, numerous department heads, city staff, all the various committees of the city, committees of the Chamber of Commerce, you get to know wonderful people. And I would recommend, not only is Geneva a city of volunteerism, but I would recommend anyone out there who hasn't yet figured out how to volunteer, please come to my wife Mary Kay, and she'll mention five or six possible things you could volunteer for tomorrow, and that's how you get to know the wonderful people of Geneva, and they really are. What have I learned on the council? I've learned patience with people, listen. Not all crazy ideas are necessarily bad ideas, and you have to listen to them, and occasionally you get some done, something done reasonably quickly, and you can help a constituent reasonably quickly. The city staff are very cooperative in working with constituents and working with the aldermen to try to see if they can triangulate a solution to a problem that looks tricky. Alderman Simonian knows it's possible to get something done early, but it also takes patience. In 60, in '86, when I was talking to Alderman Merritt King, one of the, I think, the longest-serving aldermen in Geneva, about what I could look forward under the council, we talked about some of the long-term things. Uh, the landfill, we need to do something about closing the landfill. Well, that took 10 years, and we have a beautiful ballpark there. We talked about the hollow property, well, we have the nice riverfront development now, very nice. We talked about the future of Third Street, we couldn't guess at that time that Geneva is going to become a restaurant destination. It's really changed over the years. It's a beautiful city, it's a destination for many people. We talked about the future of Sixth Street School, well, I leave that to Tara and Jim and the rest of you. We talked about diagonal parking on State Street, that came close to being disappearing a couple of different times, but we managed to keep it in place. We talked about the Route 38 overpass, and boy, we sure needed a Route 38 overpass over the train tracks east of town. Well, I haven't quite served long enough, it's not quite open yet, 28 years later. We talked about the Citron property and what was going to happen to it. Well, again, I haven't quite served long enough. I also talked to them about finances. When I joined the council, the tax rate was over a dollar. Mayor Dick Lewis appointed me as chairman of the Finance Committee, and we worked on it, mostly to the benefit of the city staff and the city administrators, Mr. Page, Ms. McHitterick, and the council, who've developed good policies over the year. We managed to get the tax rate down, I wanted, that my campaign promise was to cut it in half. Well, we got it from over a dollar down to 52 cents in 2007, and then, of course, we knew what happened, the world almost came to an end. It's crept back up to 67 cents, but I think this town is in very good shape financially, and I think that I'm convinced I'm leaving the city in very good hands. The council, the present council, Tara and Jim, the mayor, the city staff does a tremendous job. I'm not worried about the future of Geneva, and I'm going to see if I can find other places to volunteer, because that's the way to keep in touch with people around this wonderful city. Thank you for the chance of serving with you, I've learned something from everybody I've worked with over those 20, I'm only, actually only been an alderman 24 of those 28 years, but that's okay.
And actually, it's really interesting because Chuck Brown was really the alderman for the 4th Ward, but then it got re, the district.
Districted while I was away in Washington, yeah.
Right, and I actually sat, I actually took over Landberg, who, your brother, who basically sat on the city council, and it was actually Chuck's, Chuck's seat that I was sitting in.
Wow.
So it's kind of a crazy story, but it really came a turnaround.
Anyway, I believe that Dorothy and I think, thank everybody who were working with us, helping us along the way, we've learned something from everybody, and please, after the meeting's over tonight, come over to upstairs at Old Town, we'd like to shake your hand one last time and maybe share a libration. Thank you.
Alderman Bruno.
I'm a.
Please do, sir.
Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you both for serving. I, I sat alongside Dorothy here for a year and enjoyed that time, but I must say, I have a special shout-out for Chuck, a great mentor in the 1st Ward, even observing city council meetings. I always picked up on your lines of reasoning, I mean, we're kind of both geeks, so.
Probably.
You, you, so, so it resonated with me, and I always appreciated your wisdom and insight and experience and mentorship, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the dais?
I'll go.
Alderman Maladra.
Um, I'll just tell one story about Chuck. So, in my first term, Alderman Brown taught me how to be an alderman. We had, we had an issue, parking on Oak Street, I thought it was a no-brainer, uh, thought about it on the train, all by myself, uh, came in and decided how I was going to vote, and basically Chuck said, "Did you talk to anybody on Oak Street?" And I said, "Well, this is a no-brainer, why?" And so I voted, and the phone rang for months afterward. You got to get off the train once in a while and talk to people. Uh, so he taught me that being an alderman is not, is not sitting up on a dais, uh, you know, contemplating issues, it's getting out and talking with people about those issues. And that was a lesson that I learned in my first year and kept with me all along. Dorothy, I knew before I got on the city council, I don't remember what year it was, but I do remember that we started arguing then, and we've been arguing pretty much constantly ever since, and I actually fervently hope that the arguments will continue, maybe we don't need to get pitched out of a pizza place again, but.
Yeah, true.
Uh, it helps, it helps me, it helps me sort through issues, it helps, I think, both of us come up with a better understanding of what needs to be done, and from my perspective, it's awful entertaining, so. I will miss it.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the dais? Alderman Simonian?
Thank you, Mayor. I've only been on the council for two years, not the decades that these two have been on, um, but I, I started with them as colleagues, in the two short years, I think I, I feel comfortable calling them both friends. And should my journey on this dais take me decades from now still here, I hope that they can say, uh, that I earned half the respect and did half as much as you two, and I will consider it a success.
Thank you.
It was a pleasure. Thank you.
Alderman Kilburg.
Chuck and Dorothy, few have run the marathon that you've, uh, run, that you're completing tonight in service to this community. As you think back over your collective 46 years, that's a long haul, and we've all seen Geneva change over that period of time. Geneva from about 9,900 people in probably about 1988 to, to where we're at today, the development, all the things that you referenced, Chuck, that have taken place, the landscape of Geneva's changed a great deal. There's a legacy of accomplishment that you should both take a great deal of pride in. Also, I think tonight we'd be remiss if we didn't thank your spouses, both Terry and Mary Kay, for their devotion and service to this community as well, because there were countless nights when you packed up and left for a meeting and probably didn't return for three or four hours, and that was week after week after week, and I know that there were children probably involved in this process as well, and your service would not have been complete without their support over all those years. Going forward.
Yes.
Going forward, we wish you the best, may the wind always be at your back, and may the months and years ahead provide you with the time to do the things that have been put on hold for all these years. So best wishes to both of you, I certainly consider you good friends, and we'll look forward to seeing you in the streets of Geneva in the, in the weeks and months ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Ron Singer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can't really express the gratitude that I have towards my colleagues. Dorothy and I have been, I think, working at a very close proximity, we've known one another, we've met our families, we've had some very enjoyable times socially, and I can't thank her enough in the sense, as she's been my mentor for the last 18 years, and helped guide me and helped me make decisions in the right manner and form. It's very highly appreciated, and I thank you for that. Charles and I, our relationship is rather interesting, we would see one another times for lunch over at Fermi, uh, when I was on my way home from, you know, the Dome, hitting some golf balls or whatever I may have been doing, and we've always had, I think, a very nice relationship. I've always had a great deal of respect for Charles and the manner in which he presents himself, and his intellect has just, it's oftentimes amazed me. Just a delightful gentleman and a marvelous father, and someone that I admire greatly. I want to thank you both for the service you've performed, and thank you for your friendships.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience? I do have some brief remarks that the council would indulge me. As Alderman Kilburg indicated, collectively 46 years of service, but did you know that Alderman Brown has spent approximately 1,152 Monday evenings here at City Hall, Alderman Flanagan 1,056 respectively? These figures, of course, do not include the numerous evenings of the week both spent at erstwhile committee meetings throughout their careers. Both have endured countless hours of debate, discussion, questions, presentations, recognitions, and celebrations, and both are alumni of the former committee structure, during which they serve with distinction on such committees as finance, public works, parking, remember that one, Chuck? Utility, and development, to name a few. Both have suffered with dignity the reconstruction of the city council chamber, both have spirited the evolution of the city council packet from paper to electronic format. And, dare I forget, the advent of live television coverage of these proceedings. Alderman Brown and Flanagan have helped usher in a sea-change among city operations and a tectonic shift in delivering city services. Amidst all these changes, Alderman Brown and Flanagan have remained steadfast in their commitment to serve the constituents and the community at large with professionalism, passion, and purpose. If it's true that the greatest reward for a job well done is to have done it, then both of you have received your just rewards. Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you.
I forgot to mention that I believe you and I helped solve the high school parking problem.
Speaking of parking?
Yes. Now you just jinxed it, Chuck, after 24 years. Yes, wasn't that fun? That's because your son kept driving his car to school, and you got fed up with it. We do have a token of our appreciation, of course, which is ironic, because we're giving this to you now, and the council meeting has yet really to begin, so there's still work to be done, so. Alderman Flanagan?
We still have to vote.
Yes, we do.
On the rest of this.
If you want to show folks what's in this bag, that's up to you.
Okay.
It's all your mementas.
Oh, we don't want to show that. Is it like Christmas?
Yeah, it is. Yes, oh gee, a picture of me.
Did we compare notes, or is it the same?
It's, uh, except for the photos. What most people don't know is Alderman Flanagan and Brown's photos were actually scratch-and-sniff photos, the first time in the city history, so. But those are gifts, the proud picture of both the aldermen that hung at City Hall.
And they were of flowers, I'm sure.
They were of flowers. There is a, a beautiful, we think, inscribed clock bearing the city seal with your names and dates of service, there's, of course, the city flag, and there's dinner for two at the mill race, so that's good.
Catch your own.
Catch your own, yeah, and cook your own. Are there amendments to the agenda tonight, ladies and gentlemen? Alderman Simonian?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take item T off the consent agenda, uh, to discuss a couple of matters regarding that.
11T, I believe that's right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So amendments are second?
Second.
Alderman Bruno, oh, excuse me, Alderman Cummings makes the second. Voice vote sufficient, Mr. City Attorney? Or do you want to just go to the omnibus?
What I suggest is you go to the omnibus and then acknowledge that item 11T is removed.
Got it. To the omnibus agenda, all items marked with an asterisk save for item 11T have been approved by the committee of the whole unanimously and therefore can be considered by this council with one vote.
So moved.
Alderman Marx makes the motion, Alderman Brown makes the second. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Greg Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Mary Sino.
Aye.
Tom Simonian.
Aye.
Ron Singer.
Aye.
Chuck Brown.
Aye.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Don Cummings.
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan.
Aye.
We skip down to item number 10, municipal bills for payment, and we kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills for consideration, in the aggregate, of course.
Bills for payment total $1,143,631.36.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make my useful motion of emphasizing the words "approve and pay," which I learned as chairman of the Finance Committee. The city's finances are solvent, we're in good shape, and if people do business with the city, we will treat them well and we will pay them on time. And I've been proud for over a thousand times to say, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual invoices can be found on the city's website in tonight's packet. Thank you.
Second.
Never more eloquent. That second is by Flanagan, way to go, Bruno.
Couldn't wait one week.
Just couldn't wait a week. Motion by Brown, seconded by Alderman Flanagan, roll call votes in order. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Greg Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Mary Sino.
Aye.
Tom Simonian.
Aye.
Ron Singer.
Aye.
Chuck Brown.
Aye.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Don Cummings.
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan.
Aye.
Item 10 is approved unanimously, we jump down to item 11T, as in Tom, to approve ordinance number 2015-09, amending Title IV, Chapter II, Sections 4-2-1, 4-2-1-1, and 4-2-1-2 related to outdoor seating, liquor license classifications. I'll entertain a motion to put this on the floor.
So moved.
Motion by Maladra, seconded by Simonian, older Simonian, the floor is yours.
A few things for clarification. On page 286 of the packet and page 15 of the document regarding descriptions, it talks about other furniture, other than tables and chairs. I've got some concerns about that with regards to, you know, some cocktail stands or grilling equipment or those kinds of things, and I think it's an issue. Oh, I'll give you the three, three concerns I have, and I think all three of them are concerns that I'd like to at least discuss. Second one is on page 287, page 16 of the document, it says, "No white or fluorescent I can understand the fluorescent part, maybe, but the white, I have some questions about. And lastly, page 292 of the packet, page 21 of the document, signage on umbrellas. Although I am in favor of eventually getting to umbrellas with no signage on it, I, for the last week, have been traveling my personal wine tour and have noticed there's quite a few umbrellas out there with signage on it, and I think putting this in motion now and going and asking a restaurant or a bar to come, to replace 12 umbrellas, it could be a very costly venture, so I'm thinking some kind of language that would include, when current umbrellas are replaced, they can't be replaced by signage, and then some moratorium for two or three years, and then at that time, all of them have to be, to give everybody an adequate opportunity to, to filter out what's currently there. Those are my three points. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Bruno, do you want to discuss these one by one, ladies and gentlemen? Do we want to discuss item, or, excuse me, page 286 slash 15 in the presentation with respect to other furniture first? Just go down?
I'll wait.
Okay. Any comments on the other furniture? Are you comfortable with letting that move ahead and determine how that's impacted based on review after a year, or? Alderman Cummings, you seconded or offered the motion?
I have a short list of items I'd like to, so.
Excuse me, Maladra.
I think that should all be addressed, and I also have a few issues.
I, I just had a question.
Alderman Flanagan.
Were you, were you concerned about the fluorescent furniture and not the white?
Oh, I don't.
You had no problem with the white?
I, it's, it's, I just see, I just see furniture out there with white in it, not necessarily completely white, in other words, they'll have a bordered color and a white.
I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to a white, so, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Striking the fluorescent.
I think the fluorescent is a little too much, but I don't know about white.
So.
I don't know what, if you need to make an amendment, or?
Could I suggest that this is not a time-sensitive item, that the list that Alderman Simonian and Alderman Cummings have could be submitted to staff, and we could table it until the staff has a chance to address both. I myself don't understand the prohibition against white, although glaring white may be a problem, but white, you know, white comes in seven different colors, I'm told by my wife.
I would agree, I would agree that we get them all on the table and table it.
Yeah, Alderman Cummings, do you want to share with us your concern?
Yeah, my, you know, immediate with the, with the color segregation there, I worry that a place like Graham's that wants to have some sort of corporate identity flowing from 318 to, to Graham's Chocolate and has white chairs out in front of Graham's, may want to do white chairs at 318 and have that in their area where they decide, if they decide to serve alcoholic beverages. And now we, we run into a, I'm not opposed to white, I guess, I don't know, I don't know that that, that should be in there. I do wonder who is out of compliance, I'm worried about people getting into compliance and the timeline over which they have to get into compliance. I'm worried that landscaping isn't adequately addressed in here, it's maybe hinted at, and specifically my, the example there would be Villa Verone, where, again, I think that patio was absolutely within the spirit of a, of a barriered area in which to choose, to serve alcohol, and I, and I feel there was no fence necessary ever. There is a fence there now, and when I look through here, I'm not sure that landscaping is adequately addressed. I would like to be able to see a place like Villa Verone if something else springs up in the future, have a patio that's surrounded by arborvitae, or whatever it is, not have to put a fence in, not have to put other types of barriers, because landscaping is considered a barrier. I like the fact that there's no weight requirement on the posts, I think that's very good. What I'd like to do is print this up, or perhaps someone's already done this on staff, but talk to the groups that seem to have squealed the loudest about the liquor barrier issues. I'd like to print this up and go talk to them, and say, what do you think? If they don't have time and, or the interest, then we'll make the decision for them. But these are the guys that were complaining for so long, and I... And this is still complex, and I'd like to get it out in front of them.
Before there's a motion to table, ladies and gentlemen, one moment.
If I might, we have just renewed liquor licenses for the new fiscal year. So there are establishments out there that are applying for outdoor seating licenses. So we can keep what's in place and issue those, and then make changes down the road with whatever you want. It was our understanding that we were to use the Alexandria, Virginia model, and that's exactly what we did. So that's what you're seeing...
As an example of something with very good clarity, but good clarity, in my mind, is very different than good policy. And I just am worried that there may be a few things in here that we can tweak, because we're different than them, that will appeal to the masses, so we don't get the pushback that we've been getting.
Okay, I was just going to say, so that's, just finish what I was saying.
Sorry.
So that's what you see in front of you is where that came from.
Yeah.
I might suggest that because of the time of year and because we've started the new fiscal year and we've issued new licenses, that those wanting outdoor seating licenses may want to apply for the current, under the current code, and we can continue working on this based on suggestions that you send us. We could redraft it with those suggestions from Alderman Simonean, Alderman Cummings, whomever else, and try to incorporate those, assuming they don't conflict. And then if you want to tell us whom you would like them sent to, we're more than happy to send those out to those establishments as well. But I think that trying to change it on the fly when we've got businesses that are looking to open up their outdoor establishment seating areas, perhaps the best thing to do would be to do that under the current code, and then there could be a time period for compliance with any changes to the code. They don't need to table it, though.
Alderman Simonean?
I, thank you, Mayor. I personally think the other way. I'd rather get this in, not lose a year with this. I'd rather get this in and work on these other details and make those changes versus...
So do you not want them to have outdoor seating licenses then?
No, no, no. We vote on this and we agree to this, and go back and deal with the issues, the few issues, and make those few changes, because the changes are opposite of, in other words, the changes aren't, changes that are dramatic to the situation. It's actually giving them, in some of these cases, more leniency, in other words, with furniture and white and fluorescents and all that kind of stuff. And then taking Alderman Cummings' suggestions, between now and while we fine-tune this, go talk to some of the businesses out there, and if they have specific issues, we can address those and bring those. And then, but I think we, I don't think we should penalize, I mean, the process right now for another year.
Oh, no, I wasn't talking about a year. I was just, I was just trying to clarify, under which code, the current code or this revised code, do you want those licenses issued?
I would prefer this code, because if people are going to go with the old code, then they're going to spend a lot of money on a fence, and then come back six months later, or three months later, or two months later, and say, oh, by the way, we've changed it. I mean, I would be irritated if I was that person, so I think this is where we want to go, barring just a few minor changes. We go with this and then make those changes on the fly.
So, then, Mayor, could I ask that the Aldermen send me...
Oh, please, by all, yeah, I wasn't going to recommend anyone's...
Suggestions that we can incorporate into this and finalize a draft that I can send back, and once you're comfortable with that draft, then we can get it out to whomever, or you can get it out to whomever you want at that point.
It was Bruno, Kilburg, Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur with Alderman Simonean, given the implementation of this was to be more liberal for the business owners, so I wouldn't want to delay this particularly at this time of the year. I would point out, though, that the signage or wording prohibited does specifically say, it's basically not, can't be advertising for the restaurant, but I think it's okay to have, if you have a Stella umbrella, I don't think that's precluded from here. And I don't think there's any, I'm not thinking, I'm not envisioning any current umbrellas that have the restaurant name on them. I could be wrong, but I think that aspect is actually covered in here. But, yeah, I would be uncomfortable tabling this, given the needs of the restaurateurs. Thank you.
Alderman Cummings? Or, excuse me, Kilburg?
How many outdoor liquor licenses are there in the city, roughly?
I don't know. Right off the top of my head, I don't know.
Ten?
I don't know, I'm sorry.
I'm just thinking that it might be practical to bring those businesses that are currently holding a liquor, or an outdoor seating license in and essentially go through the ordinance with them, and then ask them what hardships this new ordinance would create for them. And again, a lot of the things that Alderman Simonean touched on, maybe they'd be identified. Again, I guess the last thing we want to do is to bring forward a more lenient ordinance that all of a sudden creates more of a financial burden on the businesses that we're trying to accommodate. So I would be interested in what their feedback might be after they've had a chance to look through the ordinance. I've actually visited with a couple of people, didn't know they were even doing this, that hold outdoor licenses currently. And I think it would be a service to them, and that way, everyone is on an equal playing field. As relates to this, everybody's knowledgeable, and I think that the new ordinance is going to have a lot more chance to be well-received, accepted, and implemented more effectively if, in fact, we had that discussion with the businesses. I would support Alderman's motion to table this evening if, in fact, we could expedite this and develop a list of what those minor modifications might be. Thank you.
Alderman Cummings?
I, too, would like to table it, but asking the business owner, I, personally, I'm going to go out and talk to the business owners, and if they can come in here and talk to everybody, I think that's terrific, but everybody has limited amount of time, especially in the evening. I'm not sure, when I think about umbrellas, whether a restaurant, and this is one of the questions I want to ask, would you rather have a free umbrella with the word Stella on it if you are one of the restaurants, or would you rather pay and have your own restaurant name on it? I don't want to answer that for a restaurant owner. To Alderman Kilburg's point about leniency versus financial burden, I will pay to have leniency. Leniency is worth something to me. I don't know what that's worth, but I think a business will pay to have flexibility in certain areas. And so I'm not sure that we should look at it strictly with cost. I think we really need to go out and talk to the business owners before assuming things like free umbrellas with advertising or paid umbrellas.
Just to clarify, Alderman Cummings, your comment, a establishment that has an outdoor liquor license cannot have umbrellas with their name on it, because that's a violation of the sign code. As you know, they're only allowed certain square footage of sign, that would play into that factor. So the ordinance touches many things.
It gets thicker.
It gets thicker, exactly, so...
Okay. The lands, let's see, what else? There was one other point, but overall, absolutely, I'd like to table this and...
Before the motion to table is, we want to table that, too, obviously a date certain, but Alderman Cummings, the floor is still yours.
My worry is that we're going to put something into place, let's say, who's out of compliance right now? Some people have fences with the heavy base.
Everyone's in compliance.
Everyone's in compliance.
That's correct.
Nobody has those weighted...
With the old code, not the new one.
With the current code.
With the current code.
Okay. If we put the new one in...
And everyone who has applied for a license is well aware of the changes coming down the pike, because they applied for the license. So they know that if you're...
And how quickly do we go after somebody that has a fence post with a weighted foot on it, considering that a trip hazard, that is out of compliance with the new code that we're about to put in?
How do we grandfather the existing? For how long do we grandfather the existing?
And if I just bought that last year, at the end of the year on some sale, and you tell me in May that I can't do that and I need to go spend six grand to get flat base fencing right now, that I don't have 36 months, now I, as a business owner, would really have a problem. And it's those sorts of issues that I'm worried about if we put this into place right now.
Alderman Maladra?
So, I have, I read this under the impression that if you were compliant with the existing code, the new code being more lenient, you would also be compliant with the new code. That...
No.
Just say I'm an idiot, that's okay.
Couple of minor things that are different.
What's that?
There's some differences, like what Don just mentioned, the base of the...
So something that we made them buy, and we're now going to tell them...
Yeah, that's why, is it okay if I answer?
Yeah, please.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I was saying, like, with umbrellas and stuff that are already in-existent, we got to figure out a way to grandfather...
I agree with that, right?
Or, you know, a period of time for a transition period for those folks who have made the investment or where they are today with the current code.
I didn't see a violation with the umbrellas, nor did I see a violation with the bases of the fence. I guess I missed that, so... So if there's a chance, that's something we told them last year to buy, we're now going to tell them, get rid of, I think we got to talk about it some more.
And staff certainly wasn't planning on doing that, to say, you have to change, you know, right away. I mean, typically, when we're transitioning to a new code, it's when there's a change made. If they're changing something, then that's when...
The big thing that I want to avoid is compounding, I don't want to imply that we made mistakes before anything, but let's not compound whatever we did last time by making another one this time.
Well, and I will say, if I might, at the time, we didn't allow outdoor seating. So we were trying to do something for the businesses to allow them to have outdoor seating. So we had to pick and choose from other ordinances what we thought would accommodate, you know, our businesses here.
Very successful, and so now we're growing gains.
Right, exactly.
Alderman Flanagan?
I just have a question, because Mary made a comment about that we wouldn't look at having them come up to code or to our policy that we're setting right here, but unless we have a drop dead date on here, I think that they'll get very confused, because, well, if they change out anything that isn't in agreement with this, right, then what they have, you're just, how are you going to give them the grace period? How are they going to know what to...
We, when the renewal letters went out to all of the license holders, there was, to all of the outdoor license holders, part of the letter stated that we were working on this, so they should have been made aware of it at that time, that we were working on the outdoor seating licenses, knowing that that was coming up. But our intent was to phase this in as changes were made, and not to force anybody to throw away what they had and change it over.
Okay, but if it doesn't state that, I'm just concerned that they'll get, like Alderman Simonean, he got concerned about it. Had maybe he had that language, then maybe we wouldn't have been as concerned.
And we can put a date certain if that makes you feel more comfortable.
I think it would help.
Simonean, Cummings?
Thank you, Mayor. I, the only, I just want to make sure if we decide to table this, that, for example, any new liquor licenses that are going out or whatever, that they're fully, they fully understand that there's going to be change, that they're going to have potentially, hopefully, some leniency with the whole fencing barrier thing, so don't pull, you know, I mean, I don't know how you do it in an interim period where you wait till a new ordinance comes in place, if you're going to have to make a purchase for a, and that's all I'm saying, is that I, the delay, I don't want to get it to a point where any new licenses, I mean, we've got a couple of folks building out new restaurants as we speak that have outdoor seating, and I just don't want them to go and make the investment and then find out two months from now that, oh, my gosh, I could have put planters with ropes and everything else, it would have made it much nicer. And that's all my concern is by slowing this down and tabling it. I don't have a problem tabling as long as nobody's going to be impacted with whatever we come up with.
Alderman Cummings?
One more question I have was regarding Graham's 318 and the outdoor seating, and I'm aware that they need a south barrier before they start serving alcohol on that patio area. There was some question whether the existing fence, which is embedded in limestone columns, is sufficient under the definition of fence or barrier, and if it is sufficient under the old ordinance, is it sufficient under the new ordinance, or are we back into the same issue specifically with them? Of somebody going out and measuring from the top?
It is sufficient under the old ordinance, as prescribed by the fire marshal. As most of you are probably aware, when there's a question asked, the fire marshal will, and/or whomever, will respond to the business owner, and there's always certain exceptions. The one exception of Graham's 318 is the fact that it's a three-foot drop-off as well. And so that fence that's original to the property suffices. You're right, on the south end, there's not that barrier, which I know Mr. Untied has to address, so... Again, I would recommend then the table the motion, or, excuse me, the motion to table, but I would do so, hey, let's give it to Terran Jim, what do you think?
Good first project.
Yeah, what the... A date certain has to be, and of course, a motion and a second.
I would like to see a date certain and make it sooner rather than later, two weeks out or through the next...
I defer to the council.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
We'll do two weeks.
That's...
That's the 18th.
That's a week and a half, then. We have to have it finished by Wednesday to put in the Thursday packet for the Monday meeting.
Is that the next Cow meeting?
So a week from this Wednesday, you're saying it needs to be completed.
The next city council meeting, you're tabling to the next city council meeting.
Oh, it won't go to Cow, it'll go straight to city council?
Well, it's been approved unanimously at the Committee of the Whole, and that's been amended, or at least tried here, so...
I'd like to get input from the community, especially from business owners, bring it back to Cow and push it on to council, rather than having it go right to council. That gives them the opportunity, one-on-one, to speak, perhaps to the group to speak, to come to Cow to speak, and then finally to council. And if they miss all that opportunity, then I can't, I can't help them.
That adds, pardon me, that adds quite a bit of time, though, doesn't it?
June 8th.
It's a month.
We do.
We do, Tuesday.
Unless you want to do Tuesday, the 26th, again, that's up to the motioner. Once there's a motion and a second, no more debates permitted, so let's commit to the whole.
26th? That lights a fire under everybody.
Is there a motion?
Motion to table this until 26th of May.
May 26th.
May 26th.
That'll be a special Committee of the Whole meeting. No, a standing Committee of the Whole, excuse me. Is there a second on that motion to table? Seconded by Alderman Marx, no more debate or discussions permitted. Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Greg Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonean?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Just as a comment, Mr. Mayor, I think to answer a question that the city administrator has, any pending, any new applications for an outdoor seating license is operating under the existing code.
Existing ordinance, that's correct.
And I would suggest that a draft of this ordinance be given to those applicants, so that they know what at least has been discussed and is going to be on the agenda for the 26th.
I agree, so they know the direction, the intent.
We're on to new business. Anyone from the audience, any new business this evening? From the dais? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this final meeting of Alderman Brown and Alderman Flanagan. They may never do it.
Do you want to make it? The motion to adjourn. I'll make the motion to adjourn.
And I'll second it, Dorothy.
It's actually not time for cake, folks, I just teased you. We're going to have the swearing-in ceremony of our newly-elected officials and reappointed officials. If you need to stretch your legs, we'll take a two-minute break and we'll be right back. Ladies and gentlemen, this is not the official city council meeting, but this is perhaps one of the more exciting events of any community anywhere. And it's a great pleasure to witness this yet again from this side of the dais. We have newly-elected and we have reelected officials, and we are joined tonight to swear in these officials by a very distinguished friend of ours who lives downriver in Batavia. But he's been a friend of Kane County and the region for many, many years. He practiced law in Kane County for umpteen years. He was a circuit court of the, excuse me, a circuit judge of the 16th Circuit Court for 12 years. He is a University of Illinois law graduate, and he has blessed us with his honor to help administer the oath to these men and women. Please welcome Judge Sullivan. Welcome, sir.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
The floor is yours. You're all mic'd up and ready to go?
I believe so.
And I know you've got the oaths with you as well, so the floor is yours, sir. Thank you for being with us.
Okay, thank you. The elected and reelected aldermen, if they'd step forward, please. I believe the first one is Tara Burkhart.
We're going to do it one by one, so we're going to start with...
Tara Burkhart.
And Tara, by all means, invite your family, whomever would like to join you. This is your evening. Just a heads up to the council members, the microphones are on to capture.
Would you raise your right hand, please? Repeat after me. I, Tara Burkhart.
I, Tara Burkhart.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
First ward.
First ward.
In the city of Geneva.
In the city of Geneva.
County of Kane, aforesaid.
County of Kane, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of alderman.
Of the office of alderman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Our next alderman to be sworn in is Donald B. Cummings, Jr.
Alderman Burkhart, if we would like to kindly invite you to take your seat of the dais. You are no longer allowed to fraternize with your family. Do you want us to stand there with him?
Need some company? Raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I, Donald B. Cummings, Jr.
I, Donald B. Cummings, Jr.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Second ward.
Second ward.
In the city of Geneva.
In the city of Geneva.
County of Kane, aforesaid.
County of Kane, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of alderman.
Of the office of alderman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Our next alderman is Dean Kilburg. What do you do? Ready? Raise your right hand. Repeat after me, please. I, Dean Kilburg.
I, Dean Kilburg.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Third ward.
Third ward.
In the city of Geneva.
In the city of Geneva.
County of Kane, aforesaid.
County of Kane, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of alderman.
The office of alderman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Our next alderman, Mary Sino. Raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I, Mary Sino.
I, Mary Sino.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Third ward.
Third ward.
In the city of Geneva.
In the city of Geneva.
County of Kane, aforesaid.
County of Kane, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of alderman.
The office of alderman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Next alderman is Jim Radecki.
Radecki.
Radecki. Raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I, Jim Radecki.
I, Jim Radecki.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Fourth ward.
Fourth ward.
In the city of Geneva.
In the city of Geneva.
County of Kane, aforesaid.
County of Kane, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of alderman.
Of the office of alderman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Our next alderman is Craig Miladra. Ready? Raise your right hand, repeat after me, please. I, Craig Miladra.
I, Craig Miladra.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Fifth ward.
Fifth ward.
In the city of Geneva.
City of Geneva.
County of Kane, aforesaid.
County of Kane, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of alderman.
The office of alderman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. And I believe our final alderman is Tom Simoni. Good evening.
How are you, sir?
Fine, thanks.
I assumed it was the vote of the judge, it wasn't this pleasant.
What can I say? Are you ready? Raise your right hand, repeat after me, please. I, Tom Simoni.
I, Tom Simoni.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Fifth ward.
Fifth ward.
In the city of Geneva.
City of Geneva.
County of Kane, aforesaid.
County of Kane, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of alderman.
Of the office of alderman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the swearing-in, I believe.
Your Honor, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, Judge Sullivan. The cameras are on, the microphones are also on. Ladies and gentlemen, I call this meeting of May 4th, 2015, of Geneva's newest city council to order, and I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call. The new roll call. Mike Bruno?
Here.
Tara Burkhart?
Here.
Don Cummings?
Here.
Dean Kilburg?
Here.
Craig Miladra?
Here.
Richard Marks?
Here.
Jim Radecki?
Here.
Mary Sino?
Here.
Tom Simoni?
Here.
Ron Singer?
Here.
We are all present, wonderful. Pledge of allegiance is in order for the new meeting. If I could be so bold as to ask our newest council members, Alderman Burkhart, Alderman Radecki, to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, meant to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both. Item 3A is to consider the mayor's reappointment of city officials for 2015-16 fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Simoni makes the motion. Alderman Marks makes the second. Any questions or comments from the council? Roll call order, please. Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Miladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jim Radecki?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simoni?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously, ladies and gentlemen. Before we move on to the next item, I would like to read into the record a following statement regarding our public officials who have just been reappointed this evening. The vote recorded is an expression of our collective faith, trust, and appreciation for the work performed not only by the department heads but by their respective teams. Their leadership, their mentoring, and management of their teams advances the spirit of the city throughout the ranks of our professional staff. The 143 full-time men and women employed by this city do not work for this city council, and they do not work for the citizens of Geneva. These men and women work alongside all of us in the shared pursuit of building and maintaining a city and a community that evokes pride, purpose, and of course, possibilities. While we sometimes like to boast that we challenge our professional staff to do better, make no mistake, they often challenge us, remind us, encourage us, and educate us on exactly how to do better. This city council is effective. Our professional staff is effective. Together, we create a community that is envied by others near and far because of our effectiveness. Thank you to the city council for your affirmation of the department head's skills and dedication, and thank you by extension for your applause and appreciation for the work they do and their teams do each and every day. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the department, thank you as well. Item 3B, to consider mayor's reappointment of city boards and commissioners. Woo! Motion by Alderman Singer?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Miladra. Any questions or comments? Do we have any members of the boards and commissioners present this evening? He did leave, didn't he? Take it away. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item 4, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item 5 is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine and can be considered and acted upon by this council with one motion. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
We're going to go through it for the newbies. It's all good. All, Mr. Clerk, take the roll on the omnibus agenda that doesn't exist. I believe Simoni made the motion.
And I seconded it.
Sino made the second.
Second.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Miladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jim Radecki?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simoni?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?[1680.84]